Okay, we have some minutes to adopt, so I need minutes for, we got November sixteenth, twenty-eighth, and December sixth. Can I get some motions, please?
I'll move to adopt the minutes of November sixteenth, right in the meeting of council. Second.
He didn't vote on the approval of the agenda.
Oh, yeah, so we're jumping down. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded. Motion carried. Thank you, council.
Sorry, missed that too, so.
I had to too, I was looking up for the motion number.
Alright, now we need a motion to adopt the minutes of November sixteenth.
Now, I would motion to adopt the minutes of November sixteenth, right in the meeting of council. Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adopting the minutes from November sixteenth, right in the meeting of council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
I move to adopt the minutes of the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two special meeting with council. I'll second it.
Any questions, council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded. Motion carried. Thank you.
I move to adopt the minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting of council.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded. Motion carried. Thank you. So, we have five up for public input queries. Mr. Kichay is going to read a letter first.
Thanks. Stand at the official place. Hi, my name's Nora Putre, Seventeenth Eagle Ridge Court. So this is a letter to Mayor and Council I'd like to submit. I'm a twelve-year Hamwell resident, owner of multiple businesses in Fredericton over the past thirty years, and a advocate for responsible and transparent government. I recently became aware of twenty-six code of conduct violations filed against councillor Recepton by the Mayor and councillor. So as a concerned resident of the community, I began to investigate the allegations and the issued violations to understand the root cause. So based on information I've reviewed on each of the violations from documents accessed via our tipa and the dialogue exchanged during the December sixth special council meeting, particularly the letter submitted to record by councillor Hislop, I am raising a concern about proper process potentially not being followed in issuing these violations and the associated sanctions to councillor Recepton. The fact that there exist twenty-six code of conduct violations filed against councillor Recepton, it stands to reason that there shouldn't exist twenty-six occurrences of complaints that were unable to be resolved according to the published informal complaint process. According to the published policy twenty-two dash oh eight, the conflict complaint resolution procedure, section two B one, formal complaints must be made in writing, dated, and signed. Therefore, there should exist twenty-six written, dated, and signed complaint documents. To date, I have not been able to discover these letters. I will submit to the clerk under separate cover and ask for requests for copies of the twenty-six formal complaint documents. The letter read into record by councillor Hislop after December sixth special council meeting indicates concerns from the councillor that the proper process has not been followed by Mayor and council in documenting the formal complaints, and that no independent investigation was performed prior to issuing any of the twenty-six violations. With the submission of the councillor Hislop letter, which I witnessed, there now exists two councillors who officially voiced concern over proper process not being followed in the issuance of the twenty-six violations and resulting sanctions. Since the formal complaints were issued by a councillor or staff member to another councillor, it would stand to reason that the formal complaint process could not be properly investigated internally without bias, and therefore, there should exist evidence of an independent investigation performed for each of the twenty-six violations, or documented reasoning for not requiring an independent investigation. I have reviewed a document containing the subject and associated code of conduct violation issued for each of the twenty-six violations on councillor Recepton's file. What is missing in this document is the rationale that validates the accusation and justifies the violation. I will submit to the clerk under separate cover a request for information outlining the independent investigation performed, or the reasoning for not requiring an independent investigation for each of the twenty-six violations. To summarize, the twenty-six code of conduct violations issued to a councillor, followed by sanctions to that councillor, is a very serious matter. It has many ramifications, including but not limited to, a tarnishing of the professional and personal reputation of the accused councillor, a perception by residents of dysfunction within the council, and a potential deterrent for future potential councillors to be from pursuing opportunities in council to represent their community. I have concerns of circumvention of documented policy in the council's handling of the filing, documenting, and processing of the twenty-six code of conduct violations. My intent is, as a concerned resident, to obtain clarity and conviction that proper process was, in fact, followed for each of the twenty-six violations. So thank you for the opportunity to read this letter to record. I will provide a copy to the clerk via email to follow.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any disclosures, council?
Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
And was.
Anybody else that wants to speak?
Oh, I just said the one. Anybody else wants to speak?
I'd just say, again, to reiterate what was just read. I'm a professional engineer, I was a geologist for twenty years. This lack of process that has been, and following due process, that has been particularly in Holly Hasler's letter last week, is very concerning for me as a professional, and I just want Mayor and council to know the public is watching very closely, very carefully, and we need this resolved. That's all I want to say.
Okay, anybody else?
I might as well. Why not? I have a question, Mayor. What's the procedure to follow if I want to lodge a complaint against a member of council?
Well, there is, there is in our bylaws, a procedure.
No, now I'm going to ask you here, just to make sure I understand it, because maybe I'm going to read it and not understand.
Possibly, but I'll get back to you on that. I'm not at liberty to address that tonight. I don't have the documents in front of me.
Okay. Does it have to be verbal? Can it be, if I want to make, can I just tell you and that's good, or, or it has to be in writing?
A formal complaint is in writing. A non-formal complaint is verbal.
Okay, so a formal complaint has to be in writing?
That's correct.
Alright, councillor Hislop, Recepton was really treated that way.
This was not a formal complaint. It was never through.
Hold on. You asked about a formal complaint. I told you it wasn't a formal.
Didn't address her, I addressed you.
And I answered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to speak just for a minute, please. Off the cuff, my name's Bernadine Lucet. I live at seventy-four Somerset Drive. You've met me before. I know all of these councillors. I'm going to once again express my concern over what has occurred during the sanctions for councillor Recepton. I do not believe that you followed the direct processes. I have been a nurse manager for fifteen years, and I worked for government as a consultant in nursing, and I managed over a hundred employees, and never once did I have an employee that I had to sit down with for twenty-six concerns. My process and my training for conflict resolution required that I address it immediately, not let these kind of things sit or center. So I'm very concerned about how this process occurred. I know I'm hearing a lot of chatter out in the community as well, of other people that are concerned. So I think we need to really take heed to what people are saying, and understand that we paid attention, and I feel personally that councillor Recepton's reputation was tarnished by the whole process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I think our ten minutes are probably up.
Okay. Alright, disclosures, council? Reports, reports from the fire department.
Excuse me, sorry. I apologize. I have to, conflict of interest for the last.
You can, or you can attend.
No, I will not be attending. But for conflict of interest for section nineteen A, closed session, technical agreement is S sixty-eight one J of the Local Government Act, Labor and Employment Matters, including the negotiation collective agreements. I have to call it conflict of interest.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I apologize if I didn't say that correctly.
Not a problem. Alright, getting back to the reports from the fire department.
So, thank you.
We've had a few in the past month. Not as many as we've had in the last seven days. I think we've had twenty calls in the last seven days, so we're pretty busy. Any questions on any of those?
Sorry, I don't have any for the last one, but there was a house fire on Pinecrest.
Yep, that was just yesterday.
Yeah.
That's not part of this report.
I recognize that. Just out of curiosity, did they have to move, or is it, is it the house? I don't know the situation.
It's not livable.
It's not livable at all?
No.
Is there anybody else in the last few weeks that have the same situation, roughly-ish?
Uh, yeah.
There's a few.
Uh, well, in the last seven days, we've had four structure fires that were total loss.
The homes?
Yeah. Well, one was a garage. One was on reserve on Sunday. It was a six unit per.
In the Hamwell area, if I was to be specific, there would be two or three?
In the Hamwells, it was just one.
The current, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was just the current one. We've had one last Wednesday, which was out on the Harvey end of Mountain Road, and we had one garage fire in George on Sunday.
Was it a multi-complex apartment building?
It was on reserve, can't say reserve, yeah. Any questions regarding any of those?
No questions for Steve? Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Senator. Motion is mine by our department of forensics.
Go ahead.
Do we have a second?
Excuse me, I'm going to see Santa.
Oh, there you go.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Steve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Enjoy, enjoy Santa Claus.
I think I've got to do what candy came around.
Can I make one comment? Just to say thanks, because I did attend a volunteer session at UKFD a couple of years ago, two or four years ago. I just, I always wanted to make, want to say thank you guys. If you guys volunteer, you put yourself in harm's way when everybody else runs away. So just always want to know, big thanks. There are difficult things that you guys do.
Appreciate it. Alright.
Well, Christmas is here.
Sorry if that was out of line, but.
No, certainly for a good cause. We all appreciate the hard work of the Upper Kingsley Fire Department. They've got fifty-five volunteers there, and every one of them, for the last man and woman, are all just, they're just unbelievable how hard they work and how much dedication they have. Okay, so permit applica-, no, presentations, I don't believe we have any. I'm unaware. Permit applications. We've got a couple.
Did we ever come up with, we're going to check into this. I know we keep, I know it's on them. I know there's so many things to do, just.
No, we did, and they had to change one of their bylaws, or whatever. So he said that it would be in January that they'll start that process, and then they'll get back to us.
So there's certain review on it. So that's good.
Let's get that one there.
Yep. So let's look, had a firewall for ten thou, and a detached garage for twenty-five thou. And then we've got a development permit for, nope, no development permit. Good. Alrighty. Proclamations, we don't have any. Petitions and allegations, we don't have any. Business is rising. So we've got a bylaw twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, a bylaw respecting the Upper Kingsley Fire Department. Can I get somebody to make a motion on that one, please?
We need to read it completely.
Yes, yeah.
As we all look at councillor McKenzie. I can do it. Okay, I, it's become my thing for some reason. I, I move that bylaw twenty-six to twenty twenty-two, bylaw respecting Upper Kingsley Fire Department, be given its due reading by title, and read it in its entirety and enact it. I'll second it.
Pardon?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded?
Okay.
Mister McKenzie, the floor, sure.
So there we go. Bylaw twenty-six to act twenty twenty-two, bylaw respecting Upper Kingsley Fire Department. Pursuant to subsection ten-two of the Local Government Act, S N B twenty seventeen C eighteen, amendments thereto and regulations adopted there under the county of the rural, sorry, rural community of Hamwell hereby enact as follows. One, title, this bylaw may be cited as the fire bylaw. Definitions two, in this bylaw, act refers to the Fire Prevention Act, R S N B nineteen seventy-three, C F thirteen, and regulations thereunder. The C A O refers to the Chief Administrative Officer. Council refers to the Council of the Rural Community of Hamwell. Department or fire department refers to the Upper Kingsley Fire Department. Firefighter refers to any volunteer firefighter, male or female, or any rank or title, of any rank or title. Fire chief refers to the Chief Officer of the Fire Department responsible for all administrative and operational functions of the Fire Department and is in overall command as per the department's chain of command and operating procedures. Fire prevention officer refers to a member appointed pursuant to this bylaw and includes fire chief. Fire protection refers to all aspects of fire safety, including but not limited to fire prevention, firefighting, or suppression, pre-fire planning, public education and information, training, and other staff development and advisory. Hamwell refers to the rural community of Hamwell. Incident commander refers to any officer in charge of a scene. Mutual aid refers to two-way assistance by fire departments of two or more communities, giving aid to the other in emergencies without monetary compensation. Non-related fire rescue refers to the following activities only: off-road rescue, water and ice rescue, heavy rescue, high-angle rescue, confined space rescue, and trench rescue. Officer refers to the chief, deputy chief, assistant deputy, captain, or lieutenant. Treasurer refers to the Hamwell Chief Administrative Officer, the C A O. Three, fire protection. A, the rural community of Hamwell referred to as Hamwell shall have a fire department, operation and management of which is under the control of the fire chief. B, the department of the rural community of Hamwell to be known as the Upper Kingsley Fire Department is hereby established, and the head of the department shall be known as the chief of the department. C, in addition to the chief of the department, the department personnel shall consist of a deputy chief, assistant deputy chief, assistant deputy, captain, or lieutenant. D, a person appointed by the fire chief as a member of the Department for firefighting duties shall do so on a volunteer basis, and will be encouraged to take such special training and examinations as may be required by the chief of the department and worksafe runs. E, the fire chief is responsible for the Hamwell, to the Hamwell Council through the Chief Administrative Officer, referred to the C A O, for administration and operation of the department. F, the remuneration, I got that word right the first try, of all members of the department shall be, as determined by the fire chief and treasurer of Hamwell appointed, approved by the Hamwell Council. Four, minimum structure of fire service requirements. A, the minimum number of firefighters is determined by the fire marshal. This number shall include, one, fire chief, one deputy fire chief, a minimum of two captains. B, if membership declines to a point where the minimum requirements are not met, or fire protection services cannot be safely assured, council may contract for services with another fire department for the interim period until an adequate level of firefighting personnel and services is reestablished. Five, the fire chief, A, may make general orders and rules as may be necessary for the care and protection of the property of the department, the conduct of the members of the department, and generally, the efficient operations of the department, provided such, provided that such general orders and rules shall not be in conflict with provisions of any bylaw of Hamwell. B, shall review periodically, policies and guidelines of the department, and may establish an advisory committee consisting of such officers and the C A O, as he she may determine from time to time, and to assist this duty. C, shall ensure that when a fire hall is to be open for the public, it must meet the National Building and Fire Code standards for public assembly. D, shall oversee and direct the department in fulfilling its responsibilities of fire protection and fire prevention education within Hamwell. E, shall subject to applicable legislation, ensure that the department becomes the lead agency in all, in the areas of fire, emergency medical services, environmental emergencies, and life safety rescue within Hamwell fire boundaries. F, shall report to all fires to the fire marshal as required by the Fire Prevention Act, the provision runs there. G, shall, while on duty, attend to all fires and supervise the fighting thereof. H, shall examine and certify the correctness of all accounts of the fire department and review monthly with the treasurer. I, shall assign to the firefighters their regular duties and other duties he she deems proper. J, shall be responsible to maintain the proper decorum on the part of the members of the fire department, insofar as the conduct of such members has a bearing on the discipline and efficiency of the fire department, and authorize to issue orders, written or verbal, respecting the conduct of members of fires, alarms, practices, and, if authorized, non-fire related rescues. K, may demote, suspend, or dismiss any member of the fire department for neglect of duty, misconduct, or breach of any bylaw or regulation, and shall report the suspension to the C A O. The affected members may make a written appeal to the C A O within thirty days of dismissal, and based on information provided leading to dismissal. The C A O may, at any time, initiate a review of any concerns or complaints regarding the conduct or activity of any member of the fire department. The C A O will respond to any such concerns or complaints by taking any action that he she considers necessary to review and/or resolve problems. These actions may include, but are not limited to, reviewing reports or other documentations, calling meetings, contacting individuals that may have information pertaining to the complaint. The C A O will then discuss the findings with council, who will then take disciplinary action up until, up to, including suspension or dismissal from the member. L, the fire chief may assist the C A O in negotiation of mutual aid agreements. M, all questions, motions, or matters before council shall be decided at a regular or special meeting council, with the exception of matters defined in the act. Six, fire chief reporting. A, shall record all equipment and apparatus testing, inspections, and up-to-date certifications, S C B A, ladders, weekly truck checks, hose, et cetera. A copy of these reports must be provided to the C A O when written to have for insurance purposes. B, shall record the particulars of every fire call, including the apparatus, equipment, and supplies used, and the full details of the event, action taken, and any follow-up required. C, shall make a monthly summary report to council of the activities of the fire department, including all calls answered, including mutual aid and training exercises. D, shall make an annual report to the council of the activities of the fire department during a preceding year, including all calls answered by the fire department, all fires, an estimate of the lost state of any firefighting equipment, an inventory of all firefighting equipment, names of all members of the fire department, and recommendations to promote the efficiency of the fire department. E, prior to May first of each year, fire chief shall provide the treasurer with an inventory of the property of the Upper Kingsley Fire Department halls, equipment, and vehicles. F, prior to October first of each year, the fire chief shall prepare the cost estimates for fire protection services, and, if authorized, non-fire related rescues for the ensuing year, ensuing year to include, one, the general cost of operation, including proposed training programs, fire prevention programs, and non-fire related rescue programs; two, the cost of repairs, placements, or additions to apparatus, equipment, supplies; three, a list of equipment proposed to be purchased; four, the capital cost of proposed buildings and equipment; five, estimates of anticipated revenue, and shall submit estimates, such estimates to the treasurer. G, prior to December first of each year, the fire chief shall submit an official list of full members of the fire department to the C A O, and shall report any changes in membership promptly to the C A O. In order to comply with Firefighters Compensation Act, the list provided will clearly indicate the date the firefighter joined the department and/or date of termination. Seven, fire chief position and qualifications. A, must be resident of the area serviced by the fire department. B, have served as a full member of a fire department for a minimum of five years, immediately preceding his or her appointment. C, have strong leadership and communication skills, and the capacity to fill, fulfill all responsibilities and duties required for the efficient operations of the fire department. D, work closely with Hamwell council, the C A O, and others' stakeholders. E, have grade twelve or equivalent. F, the term of office shall be ten years, but must continue in office until a successor is appointed. G, the fire chief is to serve a minimum probationary term of six months to a maximum of twelve months. H, any person wishing to become the fire chief shall apply in writing to the Hamwell C A O. The fire chief shall be appointed by Hamwell council following due process. The C A O and council may consider written advice received from the fire department membership. I, the Hamwell council may recommend to the fire marshal that the fire chief be appointed to carry out the provisions of the Fire Protection Act, Prevention Act. It is preferable that the fire chief be a local assistant to the fire marshal pursuant to subsection seven-one of the Fire Prevention Act, which reads, seven-one, "A local assistant referred to in subsection six-one shall investigate or cause to be investigated under subsection two, cause, origin, and circumstances of every fire or explosion occurring within the territorial jurisdiction of the local assistant, and by which property has been destroyed or damaged, to ascertain in each case whether the fire or explosion was a result of negligence, carelessness, accident, or design." Eight, deputy fire chiefs. A, shall respond promptly to all fire alarms. B, shall obey all lawful orders of the fire chief, and C, in the absence of a fire chief, have all power and, have all power and perform all the duties of the fire chief. D, upon request of the fire chief or deputy fire chief, every person attending a fire shall assist any firefighter in performance of the duties at the fire, and shall obey all orders and directions given to him or her by the fire chief or deputy fire chief in connection with the fire. Nine, deputy fire chief position and qualifications. A, if this person must have the same qualifications as fire chief. B, the term in office shall be ten years. C, any person wishing to become a deputy fire chief shall apply in writing to the fire chief, and a copy provided to the Hamwell C A O. The deputy fire chief shall be appointed by Hamwell council in consultation with the fire chief. D, the fire chief shall carry out the instructions of the fire chief, and in the absence of the fire chief, shall assume the duties and responsibilities of the fire chief. The deputy fire chief does not, however, automatically become a local assistant to the fire marshal, as his power can only be invoked by the fire marshal. Ten, captains shall be responsible for the conduct of firefighters in his or her platoon. B, shall report in writing to the fire chief the absence of any firefighters and any neglect, misconduct, or breach of any bylaw or regulation by firefighter. C, shall, while on duty, take charge of all firefighting equipment, and always keep in good order, in repair, and ready for efficient service, and shall report any defect to the fire chief. D, shall always preserve order and discipline of the firefighters while on duty. E, shall be responsible for all checklists provided by the fire chief. Eleven, captain positions and qualifications. A, captains will be appointed by the fire chief, and will be tasked with specific duties as prescribed by the fire chief. In addition, the captain will be required to take the leadership role at operation scenes in the absence of the fire chief or deputy chief. B, all department officers are responsible for ensuring that the firefighters are properly instructed to perform their duties safely, for ensuring work procedures are adhered to, the regulations of per worksafe in Brunswick, and report any unsafe conditions. The mayor shall speak on issues of concerns to rural community on behalf of council, as per section forty-eight one of the act. Well, incident commander. A, is the officer in charge of the scene. B, shall have full charge and sole command over the conduct of all persons at the fire, whether they are members of the fire department or not. C, shall make a record of the attendance of all firefighters at each fire. D, whenever the incident commander in charge of the fire deems it advisable to be guard, to guard the locality of the fire from crowding of persons or vehicles, he or she may place or request to be placed on a rope or other barrier across any street or public place to indicate the area from which person or vehicles are prohibited. E, no person except members of the fire department, the police department, and the owner of the property endangered by the fire shall enter or be within the area marked off by ropes or barriers. Thirteen, fire alarms. A, no person, hang on a second here. It should be no person, not personnel. No person shall turn off, reset, or otherwise interfere with and activate a fire alarm prior to the arrival of fire department. B, every person who is required under the National Fire Code to prepare and implement a fire safety plan approved by the fire chief, shall install and maintain a lockbox on his or her premises. C, no more than one lockbox shall be located and maintained on each premise. D, the type of lockbox installed, installed shall be approved by the fire chief. E, the lockbox shall be surface mounted within three meters of the main entrance of the premises at a height between one point five to one point eight meters above the ground. The fire chief may authorize deviation from the lockbox location due to structural design of premises. Fourteen, general. A, members of the fire department shall comply with this bylaw and all the rules and regulations of the department. B, fire department vehicles and fire equipment shall not be used for any work other than the work of the fire department. C, no fire department vehicles or fire equipment shall be taken beyond the limits of the Hamwell fire boundaries unless to assist a mutual aid call, or to take for service to a location outside of the Hamwell fire boundary. D, all members, including the fire chief, is responsible to understand and comply with the contents of this bylaw. E, all members shall assist in returning all apparatus and equipment to a state of readiness after emergencies, training sessions, or when otherwise advised. F, every member shall conduct themselves or herself in a professional and respectful manner while on duty or representing the department. G, every member who commits him or herself to a mandated response situation is expected to perform all duties required as their assigned role in the department in order to handle various situations as presented. H, the emergency measures coordinator, along with the mayor and or deputy mayor, are authorized to order emergency or urgent repairs or activities, or emergency, or an emergency urgent to order emergency or urgent repairs or activities on emergency or an emergency urgent basis to protect the public safety or to protect the assets and citizens of Hamwell. I. No person, one, shall drive a vehicle over or across an unprotected hose or other firefighting equipment unless he or she is given permission to do so by the incident commander. Two. Shall disobey the orders and directions... Or directions... Orders and directions of the incident commander given the performance of his or her duties at a fire. Three. Shall interfere with or obstruct the fire chief, deputy fire chief, incident commander, or any firefighter in the performance of his or her duties at a fire. Four. Shall place merchandise so as to obstruct the entrance to any premises by firefighters through any window, door, stairway, or passageway. Five. Shall obstruct, paint, or take action to conceal a fire hydrant without the written joint permission of the C A O and the fire chief. Fifteen. Membership. For the purpose of this bylaw and the following are classifications and qualification requirements for membership of the upper Kingslayer Fire Department. A full member. In order to be classified as a full member firefighter in the upper Kingslayer Fire Department, a person must: A. Be at least eighteen years old; B. Be a resident of the area serviced by the fire department; C. Provide appropriate medical certificates upon request by the fire chief; D. Possess or be able to obtain at minimum a standard first aid certificate; E. Successfully complete firefighter-one training within two years or have obtained the equivalent from another jurisdiction providing is recognized by the N B C C and O F M. One second here, sorry. O F M, Free Office of Fire Marshal, is not defined in the terms, so I get that. F. Possess and the appropriate class of license for driving assigned fire apparatus and have passed a recognized defensive driving course if duties include driving fire apparatus. G. Possess appropriate training and/or certification for any other assigned duties within the fire, with the fire department, for example, traffic control, non-fire-related rescue. H. Maintain the following attendance requirements to retain as a full member. One. Regular scheduled training sessions, sixty percent. And two. Mandated responses, twenty-five percent. I. All full members shall serve a probationary period of one year. Support member. A person is eligible to be classified as a support member who: A. Is a resident of the area serviced by the fire department; B. possesses a valid standard first aid certificate; C. possesses the appropriate class of license for driving assigned fire apparatus and has passed a recognized defensive driving course if duties include driving fire apparatus. D. Participates in a task-specific support role for operational activities as designated by the fire chief. E. Has received training required to undertake designated tasks. A junior member. A person who is eligible to be classified as a junior member must be sixteen years of age but less than eighteen years of age and have a parent or guardian complete and signed permission and waiver forms supplied by the fire chief. A. Must initiate and be willing to obtain the firefighter-one training and certification. B. May participate in minor support roles for which training has been received, for example, equipment pickup, washing hoses and trucks, cleaning up equipment, repacking hose and equipment on apparatus, as designated by the fire chief or training officer. C. May only perform support or auxiliary work at fire ground operations, such as providing refreshments to the first responders well outside of the hot zone or operational area. I wonder if hot zones should also be defined. It's in quotes, but it doesn't really describe what it would be, so. D. Will not be exposed to hazardous material. E. Junior members are not permitted to attend D N R forest, wildland, forest, wildland, or grassfire scenes. F. All junior members shall have probationary status until such time as he or she has achieved firefighter-one training and reaches eighteen years of age and becomes a full member and has met the criteria in subsection full member. Life member. A member may receive the special recognition of the fire department membership for reasons determined by the membership of the fire department if the member: A. Is retired from the fire department; and B. Does not participate on a regular basis in the day-to-day operations of the fire department. Honorary member. A person who is not a member of the fire department on whom special recognition is bestowed by the members of the fire department may: A. Due to bestowed ceremonial title only; B. Not receive any benefits received by other members of the fire department. Auxiliary member. A person who assists the fire department in a non-firefighting capacity and: A. Does not respond to call-outs; and B. Assists with duties such as ceremonial events, fundraising events, preparation of refreshments, and/or other administrative duties. Any person wishing to become a member of the fire department shall apply in writing to the fire chief. Every application shall be reviewed by the fire chief and deputy chief, who will maintain a list of eligible applicants and a copy provided to the C A O. Any member who wishes to alter their classification or membership shall apply in writing to the fire chief. If at any time a firefighter is physically unfit to perform his or her duties, it is responsibility of that firefighter to notify the fire chief in writing of this condition. In order to resume activities, he or she must provide a medical certificate stating his or her ability to return to regular duties. Any reasonable expense incurred to provide this certificate will be reimbursed by the fire department. Sixteen. Injuries or death of membership. A. The injury or death of any member that occurs as a result of his duty at a fire training or, if authorized, a non-fire-related rescue response or any other call shall be reported immediately to the fire chief or the incident commander as soon as possible notification should be given to the C A O. B. A member who is injured or involved in an accident while reporting to or on duty will fill out appropriate forms issued by work safe in Brunswick as per timelines. Times, yes, lines. Seventeen. Media. A. Any media obtained by a member during an emergency call in a fire hall or a training session on-site or outside of the fire service boundary, be it in form of photographs, video, or audio recording, becomes the property of the department and may not be distributed without the express consent of the fire chief and C A O. Eighteen. Meetings. The upper Kingslayer Fire Department must meet weekly for instruction and/or practice in the fire prevention and fire protection methods and, if authorized, non-fire-related rescues and the use of apparatus and equipment. B. The minimum requirement is forty hours of in-house training per year. C. The fire chief, deputy chief, captains, and designate are encouraged to attend Capitol District Association meetings. Nineteen. Purchasing authority. Counsel can designate the fire chief to have authority to purchase up to a thousand dollars for recurring budget purchases of non-equipment. The treasurer maintains the final approval for non-recurring purchases and purchases more than a thousand dollars. Twenty. Fire equipment. A. The equipment and apparatus of the department, whether purchased by or donated to the fire department, is property of Hamwell and may not be transferred or otherwise disposed of without the approval of council. B. Hamwell will not be financially responsible for personal items damaged or lost on fire department property or during fire department-related activities. C. Every member who has been assigned a communication device or radio pager will always keep them and be ready for active service. Twenty-one. Liability. No action or other proceedings for damages shall be instituted against the rural community of Hamwell, the fire department, the fire chief, or any firefighter authorized to act on behalf of the fire department under this bylaw with respect to anything done in good faith or omitted to be done in the execution or intended execution of his or her duties under this bylaw. Twenty-two. Documentation. Get to the end, folks. A. In conjunction with the fire chief and the C A O, various administrative documents will be provided to the fire department. B. As part of probation and firefighting training, the guideline probationary firefighter training must be adhered to and signed by all parties. This bylaw shall come into effect on the date they are enacted. And thereby, the bylaw is hereby enacted.
Thank you, Counselor McGinty. Your job well done. A lot of reading.
That was a long one. There's a few things we've got to do on this.
Clean up a little bit there. Yeah, I took note of them.
What else?
It was already started. I think we got to vote now.
Yep.
Nope, you already vote. You vote first and then you do the majority.
Okay, we've got eleven B's, donation request.
Just a point of order. Can I ask how much money we have left in our donation budget?
It's a thousand dollars.
So before we do this, I don't know if it's appropriate, but that homeowner that lost their house just for Christmas, I know I had a flood, lost all the Christmas presents and extremely bad, would it be bad for him for me to make a motion for a donation to whoever that homeowner is? Would that be acceptable? Because I didn't send a motion earlier, but I didn't know what the structure was destroyed or not. But you can imagine this close to Christmas.
Up to a chair.
Oh, should we not? He said there were several. So should we not, if we're going to donate?
Only one in Hamwell, though. The rest are outside of Hamwell at the moment, and so I'm not going to vote.
That's what he said.
Well, we can talk about it, discuss it. There's no, you have to put a motion out.
So I'll say, worship. Actually, it'd be hard for me to say it and then suddenly not vote for it, so I don't want to do it unless people... If it's not proper order, I don't want to do it.
Well, it wasn't on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda, it wasn't.
I think we can move it off to the next meeting and then we can put it on the agenda.
We missed the Christmas season, so that's why I was trying to rush. I know what happens when I lost all my presents. I was in tough financial times.
I did see tonight that a gentleman had posted saying that, like, Christmas is all covered, everything's good, they have presents, they're all set. So if that helps with...
Okay, actually, that does help.
And I do know the fire department told me that they got the iguana and all the presents out.
Oh, cool. I also do know that the mayor has the ability to make a donation up to a certain amount.
There you go. That actually works, your worship. If you don't mind just checking in and doing the good things best, I think that'll work out well.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Then I'm not going to bring that motion forward.
What we could do, we received the money from the tables for the craft sale. I think it was like three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Because I was going to bring it up to see if we wanted to do it with the other family that was burned down or whatever. It is, but it was right on our border of our new thing anyway, so we could possibly just give that money to...
Where this one is actually in Hamwell.
Yeah.
We were looking for a family to support, so I would think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, and that doesn't need a...
Doesn't need a motion.
Or whatever.
The money we have from the craft fair, so we can donate that.
That works. I worship the combination. Thank you.
Okay, so we still had a donation request from F Y H A. And that's the one.
So this is the one that you guys tabled last night.
So we need to make a motion to give a donation or make a motion to receive the correspondence.
Just one here?
Eleven, what was it, eleven B's?
Eleven B, F Y H A?
Yeah.
All right, have we determined?
They did get back to us with further information. We've got within Hamwell, the two team members, two coaches, one team manager reside in Hamwell. Your donation will go directed to the cost of admission into the tournament. As stands right now, each team member's parents will be responsible for two hundred dollars extra on top of the five hundred dollar entry fee in hockey to cover the tournament fees, so any donation will lower the parents' fees. That's just information we've got since we tabled this motion.
So does this open, I guess, can we discuss it now or do you want a motion first?
Counsel's wishes.
We should make a motion first.
Okay, we'll get a motion.
Do we want to make a motion for a certain amount?
Sure.
And then you guys can discuss.
If we're going to give them two fifty?
Try to just cost like a half a buck, I think it's still about that.
Okay. All right, I move to accept the correspondence from F Y H A with respect to making a donation and authorize to direct the clerk to make a donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, questions, counsel?
So my first question is, one, residents are already paying three cents for a hundred. We're already subsidizing ice sports. So I think this is, it opens a slippery slope for me because this opens up for every dance competition, every person, every one of our students that's eligible then. This is just simply a tournament. So if they have six tournaments this year, then they can ask six times.
Yeah, and like you said, it is a slippery slope because we donate to one, then we pretty well have to donate to everybody, so our donation pool could be zero pretty darn quick. And especially where everybody in hand was already paying three cents for the use of the rinks and whatnot, which is a substantial amount when you put it on your tax bill. It's a fairly hefty donation, and people are paying a lot whether they have kids in hockey or not, or any ice sports, so.
Well done. You folks turned me around, but I was actually going to argue for it, but that's a really big point. We're already paying a tax on it, and as much as, of course, I want to help the teams, but well earned.
Okay, any other questions, concern? Yes, Counselor Fox?
My, I have the same concern. I think there's so many teams out there, and especially ice teams, where we do pay that, that it concerns me that we'll be, once we do one, we'll be flooded with these, and there's a lot of charitable requests that we get that, quite frankly, I would rather support.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor of making a donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded?
Aye.
Okay, motions defeated. Okay, so we have some correspondence. We got correspondence from a resident, thank you, early Remembrance Day ceremony. Has everybody seen that one? That was a very nice letter from Joe and Pat O'Neill. They certainly appreciated the Remembrance Day ceremony. It's a, they really, it's really nice enough to put a letter in to acknowledge that it was a job well done by counsel and staff.
It looks to a motion to receive the thank you letter from Joe and Pat O'Neill in acknowledging the mayor, council, and staff for remembrance day service and protection. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded? Thank you, motion carried. Now we have a B, donation request in the Brunswick Police Association.
This one is, once again, one of those guides that they come to each year. We haven't given to them for a little bit, so.
If you don't mind, I'm going to make a motion just so we can get the debate on the floor. Personally, I'm going to make a motion not to put a donation into them. I move to receive the correspondence from the Dubrundie Police Association with respect to donation to the thirty-fifth Annual Crime Prevention Guide. I'll second it.
Okay, any questions, counsel? All those in favor of receiving the correspondence, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded? Thank you. Now we have a donation request for N B Command of the Royal Canadian Legion. This was filed forward in July.
Okay, yes, so this one here, we received the email, and I put it on the agenda, and then we realized that a different person from the same organization emailed us back in July. It was for the Military Service Recognition Book, which we have done in the past. However, last year, we just did, or sorry, in July, we just did the donation directly. We said no to the military book, so I think that they didn't realize that they, two people had contacted us, so my recommendation on this would be that we've already done it, so.
Yeah, so I'd like to most receive correspondence from the N B Command of Royal Canadian Legion with respect to purchasing an advertised base and a military service recognition book. Second.
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 Questions? All those in favor of receiving the correspondence, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded? Thank you, motion carried. Okay, we have meetings and special events?
No.
Nope, sorry. Back up somewhere. Oh, yeah, threatened homeless shelter. Sorry, guys. Donation request from threatened homeless shelter.
I'm moved to accept the correspondence from the threatened homeless shelter, not rising very quickly to make a donation to the homeless shelter in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that.
Questions? All those in favor of...
That's going fast, guys. Make sure Williams too.
Is there any comments from?
Have we decided on seven hundred and fifty?
That's what this part is about.
Well, that's a question, so is everybody happy with that, ma'am?
I am. I was just curious if Counselor Fox would have any comments or...
Shelters do great work. It's within our budget. I'm certainly fine with seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All those in favor of making a donation to the threatened homeless shelter in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay, now moving on to the item thirteen, meetings and special events, mayor's report. Has everybody received that? Can I get a motion, please?
I'm moved to receive, oh, sorry. I'm moved to receive the mayor's report.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded? Thank you, motion carried. Okay, so age-friendly did not meet. Communications, we need a motion to accept Mark Murray's resignation from the Communications Committee effective December twenty-twenty-two.
I'm motion, I move to accept Mark Murray's resignation from the Communications Committee effective December twenty-twenty-two. I'll second.
I'll second it.
Questions?
He's a good guy. We're gonna miss him.
Yeah, we, I tell you, we don't have near enough volunteers, so. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion to accept the Communications Committee report. Report. Wasn't it, since we made an action motion, it doesn't. It's not reported.
Okay, economic development did not meet. Emergency measures, I also need a motion to accept Mark Murray's resignation from the EMO Committee effective December twenty twenty-two.
I move to accept Mark Murray's resignation from EMO Committee effective December twenty-second.
No, from December twenty twenty-two.
From December twenty twenty-two.
Does that second?
Second.
All those in favor of, any questions? All those in favor of accepting Mark Murray's resignation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
Since we do have an actual EMO committee report, I will motion to see that.
Second.
Any questions on the EMO? Report?
I just wanna say with the EMO report, we had a presentation from Brett Peterson and he does the amateur radio club. So they are talking about possibly putting in a tower right here. On our building and he thinks that he can get all the equipment donated. Where this is our emergency center. If there's ever communication issues, then we'll have backup. Power, so he. Our closest tower. That is, is part of the International Globe is at Crab Mountain, so he did a presentation with us and. Radiowed somebody and they were able to pick it up just as clear as.
So knowing about that, then, so UKFD owns a VHF antenna. Have we?
We talked about that because we thought maybe putting it there, but then when he realized that this is actually our emergency center, he was like, it'd be so much. Better to do it there. And then we talked about possibly moving that.
Well, that was my suggestion. Why don't we just take that one and put it down here?
Or whatever, but he said that he thinks that he can get. The equipment donated, so if we can, then that is possibly an option if if our department's not using it for. Something or maybe have kind of two towers or something, so.
I can't believe that Advanced Fabrics hasn't told them to get it out of there yet because it's still on the spot. It's the old building.
That's right, too.
Yeah.
Apologies, bother Mitch too much. Okay.
Call for question.
So.
Motion.
Okay, motion to accept emergency measures report.
We already.
We did that. Okay.
We need a vote.
All right. All those in favor of receiving the emergency measures report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Thank you, motion carried. Alrighty, finance did not meet, governments and policies did not meet, Parks and Act.
We did not meet. I was sick.
Okay. And treasures report. Did everybody receive a copy of the treasures report? Alrighty.
So we had a couple of issues with our heating system. So there was some invoices. They were, we have budgeted demand for. Or or maintenance. So that was kind of a shock. One invoice was forty-three hundred and the other one nineteen hundred. The grant funding was received from the Regional Development Corporation in the amount of forty-one thousand four twenty-two for the solar system. And we also received two hundred and twenty-three thousand seven forty-two twenty-five. From a grant from a COA for the accessibility trail and we also received another grant for twenty thousand dollars towards the Veterans Memorial. And the biggest expenditures was our debenture payments, so our principal payment on this building was thirty-seven thousand dollars. Our interest payment on it was fifteen thousand ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And the interest payment on the fire station was sixteen thousand three ninety-four. Or through the municipal cap.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the treasures report?
I move to accept the treasures report dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two as presented.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Comment. It's nice to see the bank is finally paying us about forty-six hundred bucks a month interest. I assume it's monthly, right? Finally.
That's about time.
Yeah, we're paying for it the other side out.
So all those in favor of accepting the finance report, treasures report, please signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Older unfinished business, the accessibility trail. I don't know if there's anything to report on that, is there? I know a lot of people are enjoying it. I've received many comments on how much they're enjoying the accessibility trail. It's working out really well.
No, it shouldn't.
Finished it. Yeah, it's done. Yeah, but shouldn't even be there.
Okay.
Accessibility trails.
People are certainly enjoying it, that's that's for sure. New business year end transfers, we have our laptops.
Okay, so our year end transfers, the auditor and I have been working together most of this week trying to get all the invoices. Done for year end, figuring out anything that may be coming in. So we have money that is left over from our budget and as you know, we always transfer those funds. We needed to purchase two laptops so that our new counselors can start as of January the first. So it was the auditor's recommendation where the budgets and stuff are so tight next year that we just pay that out of our surplus instead of transferring it over, so. I would just like to motion to approve that invoice to pay it out of the general operating fund surplus.
Okay, need a motion?
I move to authorize the clerk to pay Brunnett's invoice for the purchase of two new laptops in the amount of two thousand four hundred and ninety-five plus HSD. From the twenty twenty-two general operating fund surplus.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor of authorizing the clerk to pay Brunnett's invoice for the purchase of two new laptops, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
So, yeah, sorry. I move to rescind motion number thirteen ten twenty-two from the October twenty-four regular meeting. Yes, I'll second.
Okay, so call for questions, but you have a preamble.
I do, so this motion, that is the one. That we transferred the seventy-four thousand dollars from the reserves to operating. It can't go for to operate and it has to go to capital, so we're just changing that. However, the next motion we are correcting.
That's what I saw, yeah.
Correcting that, but we received seventy-three point fourteen percent of all HSD get back that we pay in. So I've already received that, so we don't have to transfer as much as what we did, so. I've got the motion for the next transfer if somebody wants to make that. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we need a, any other questions, concerns? Okay, all those in favor of presenting the motion, please signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you, council. Okay, so there's another, there's another new motion. I'll let Terry give a little more information.
Yeah, so this is, this is just the new transfer with the amount instead of it being seventy-four thousand dollars. We've received the grant and then I only need to use twenty-two thousand dollars out of our reserve. For the solar system.
Want me to read that?
Yep.
All right, whereas the solar array project was approved in twenty twenty-one and whereas forty thousand dollars was approved through the twenty twenty-two general operating fund budget. Whereas a grant was received to the Regional Development Corporation in the amount of forty-one thousand two hundred and four hundred and twenty-two dollars, I move that. Twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-three cents for the general capital reserve fund we contribute to the general capital fund for the solar array capital project.
Secondary?
I'll second.
All right, questions, council? All those in favor of the move from the reserves with the capital funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. So we need a motion on the service.
Okay, so after everything has been tallied, we will have fifty thousand dollars from our budget that we didn't use for this year. So we will transfer that into the reserves. Most of that is because we weren't able to finish our multipurpose surface and stuff, so there's. We're gonna have like the the fence and the marking landscaping and stuff like that, so it was actually a really good budget this year. It was very close, so.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Be it resolved that the council of the Royal Community of Hanwell contribute fifty thousand dollars from the general operating fund to the general capital reserve fund as the year-end surplus for twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so now we've got to go through to the appointment of CAO Treasurer and Clerk Assistant Treasurer. Can I get a motion, please?
Whereas the Minister of Local Government and Local Governance Reform has the authority to appoint officers of a restructured local government and revoke the appointments of existing officers appointed by the council. Of an affected local government and whereas the authority for the minister to appoint or revoke officers is established by an act respecting local governance reform. Section eleven two H and whereas Terry L. Parker has been appointed as the Chief Administrative Officer, CAO. Slash Treasurer effective December eighth, twenty twenty-two and whereas Sherry Johnson has been appointed as the clerk effective December eighth, twenty twenty-two and. Whereas Minister Danielle Elen has revoked the existing clerk and treasurer officer appointments in the affected local government. That will comprise Hanwell effective January first, twenty twenty-three. I move to approve the appointed officers for Hanwell as Terry L. Parker, CAO slash Treasurer. And Sherry Johnson, clerk, as well as the position of Assistant Treasurer.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Questions? I'm assuming you guys are all right with those appointments?
There's another town that tried to argue with the council. Yeah, the council lost. The minister wins.
The minister has.
This is just a formality. It's a.
The minister does have the authority.
Minister does it.
Yeah.
Tenure Act. It was in July. Yeah, the the council wanted a different one, but he already said this person and wow. The council lost.
That's the golden rule. Those that have the gold make the rules. All right, all those in favor of the appointment of the CAO Treasurer and Clerk Assistant Treasurer as Terry and Cherry, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Thank you, motion carried. So we need one for the appointment of a CAO as interim assistant clerk.
I move to appoint Terry L. Parker as the assistant clerk until a full-time position is filled.
I'll second it.
Any question? All those in favor of the appointment of the CAO as interim assistant clerk, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we need a motion on the tax levy collection.
Okay, so as explained before. We did a bylaw to start collecting the accommodation tax levy from the Radisson. And then they, we made a motion afterwards because they wanted the city of Fredericton to collect that so that they could promote the Radisson. However, the general manager has come back and has asked to be removed from the city of Fredericton and they would like for us to. Collect it. So also with the new municipal reform, we have mandated services that we have to pay this year. And one of them is for tourism and I'm sorry, I don't know the exact amount. It was like fifty-eight thousand dollars, something that we've got to. Pay each year, so these funds that we collect could be used as part of that tax levy. Or whatever, so.
Whereas the city of Fredericton is currently collecting the accommodation tax levy on behalf of Hanwell and whereas the local hotel has asked for the funds to be collected by Hanwell. And whereas the mandate mandated services for tourism through the Capital Region Service Commission are mandatory in two thousand twenty-three. And whereas the accommodation tax levy could offset the cost of mandated services, I move to authorize and direct the clerk to notify the city of Fredericton. That effective January one, two thousand and twenty-three, that the Royal Community of Hanwell will be responsible to collect the accommodation tax levy.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Item E, Hamel Radio License Renewal.
I move to cancel. Is it okay if I jump in?
I was gonna do a little bit of a preamble if you want, just to explain. So we talked about this in Parks and Rec Committee and we don't understand why. As a municipal entity, we're running a music radio station, quite frankly. So there's a cost associated with that, you have to pay social care fees and wasting fees, stuff like that. It's it's small, but it's not the point. The point is, why are we doing it? Really, that station should be intended as an information-only station. Run quite frankly by the Communications Committee. It's not in the Communication Committee mandate yet, but we can deal with that in January. It just so turns out that the license renewal is Friday this week, so I would like to get this not paid renewed on it since it's a couple days here of coming up. There's no point in us running this as a music station. There might only be a couple people that even still listen to it, but really the intent of what that whole streaming service is supposed to be anyway in the first place. Is be informational, right, for.
Start for Hanwell Days.
Yeah, it started at Hanwell Days and we did use it there. And when this first started doing music back in the days, early days of the pandemic. We are hitting like twenty-five thousand streams a month, whether it is very, very popular because everybody's home, you know, and people are doing stuff. But then as time waivered on, you know, things returned back to normal and it made less sense to keep doing that and. And just now I don't see any point why we're doing it at all, quite frankly, or, you know, why are we running a music station? We don't need to. It should be an informational station.
And even for Hanwell Days, it weirdly was to get the information out about Hanwell and then all of that stuff as well and what was going on, so.
Yeah, and we can do that live over the air again next year. Like, we could do that just for just for Hanwell Days and stuff and keep it just that one.
Just get for the information purposes only.
Yeah, and then this, we could change the name of this to like Hanwell Information Radio or something. I don't know, the Communications Committee could deal with it and hear what they want to do.
Okay, so you want to make that motion?
I move to cancel the license renewal effective January two thousand and twenty-three for the music portion only of the Hanwell radio station.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor of council on the radio license for the music section only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item eighteen, upcoming activities. A, Communications Committee meeting January ninth at five thirty. B is the Zoomers, January tenth at twelve P M. C, Parks and Recreation Committee meeting January tenth at seven P M. D, Zoomers, January twelfth at twelve P M. E, Zoomers, January seventeenth at twelve P M. F, Council meeting January eighteenth at seven P M.
I'd also like to add on January fifth, we're having the inauguration of our two new counselors or whatever and. Everybody is welcome, so that's gonna be at seven P M.
Okay. Well, that, we're gonna be moving into closed session under item nineteen, so that.
Just as a point of order, it's okay. I have to recuse myself here, but I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. Everybody, the community, Merry Christmas. Thanks, everybody, for showing up here. Merry Christmas. I appreciate everybody's attending this, taking the council session. I'm gonna recuse myself for the closed session.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Motion to.
I move that we come out of closed session and move into open session.
Secondary.
All those, questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. We are now in open session.
There are no other present.
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to hire a third party to look into HR relations within Hanwell for staff and council.
I'll second that.
Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion adjourned.
Secondary.
Motion carried. We are now adjourned nine oh one P M.